Hello, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Michael Rossi, Chairman of the Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission. I would like to call tonight's regular meeting to order. I will permit to call roll.
Michael Rossi.
President.
Mike Newsom emailed us, he will not be present. Ellen Dolgren.
Present.
Eddie Alberino.
Present.
Maya Floria.
Here.
Martin Jaffe. Alan Cravitt. Adam Moore.
Here.
Cynthia Lutary. Beau Clark.
Here.
Jay Mandel.
Here.
And Zach Flourde.
Here, Zach Flourde.
Flourde, thank you, my apologies, sir.
Okay, so I'm going to see Zach for Mike Newsom. Let's see, I didn't, I've got three people missing.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so Jay for Ellen and Beau for, God, who else was missing?
Yeah, Cynthia, Mike Jaffe, Martin Jaffe.
Okay.
Four missing.
There you go, we have four missing, okay. So we have a forum. The first item on the agenda, or the next item on the agenda is review and approval of the July 10th meeting minutes. Those were distributed, did anybody have any comments or corrections?
I didn't see any events, I didn't get any events. I didn't get any minutes.
I can leave the thing without it. Yeah, I'll verify.
Okay.
Do you want to just hold out on voting for these and then we'll wait till next one?
We could, we could do that, we could hold up. If you want to, we can just verify on each one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Move to postpone the consideration of minutes approval till next month.
We have a second?
Second.
Thank you both. Good discussion.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Standing, motion carries, thank you. Here are comments. I just want to sort of mention our new, newer system here that we're using to record meetings and also have the ability for people to visit, to attend virtually. This lovely tripod that's in front of me is able to track who's speaking and sort of follows that person around. At the same time, it's picking up the audio that we're required to record by the state. And so when you're speaking, I ask that you think about the fact that that's the microphone that's picking you up and get that. The other thing to keep in mind is it's really difficult for it if multiple people speak, so please try not to speak over top of each other, okay? That'll just help us with the, with the recording. With that, we can move on to item four, receipt of applications. First item is Planning and Zoning Commission 23-20 for 88 West Main Street, special exception, first floor restaurant. On second floor, a two-bedroom apartment. This is West Main LLC. It's a special exception, so we need to receive this and schedule it for a public hearing on the 11th of September. Do I have a motion to re-
I'd like to make a motion to receive PZC 20-23, Jeffrey Brady, 88 West Main Street. It's scheduled for a public hearing on September-
11.
11.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I believe the applicant's attorney is on to follow.
Okay, the applicant's attorney, would you identify yourself and go ahead and give us a very short introduction because again, this has a public hearing coming.
Yes, I didn't want to, I was just kind of observing to make sure I had all the information correctly so I could, I know I'm going to get emails from my client tomorrow asking what happened at last night's meeting, so I'm just here observing and look forward to coming before the commission at next month's meeting.
Okay, thank you. With that, there's any further discussion?
Yeah, I just had it, with this new numbering system, Abby, can you distinguish these two applications, the 2320 and the 2321?
Yes, 2320 is the application for the special exception to allow accessory apartments, that's an additional opportunity, yep, and 21 is the site plan.
I see it now, I missed that first on the first.
So the thought process, we would, we would put them together so you would have one presentation and-
Correct.
Sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so all those in favor of the receipt and scheduling of the public hearing on September 11th, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Standing, motion carries, thank you. Our second item is the one that we just heard of, PZC 2321, which is the site plan for 80, 88 West Main Street with a first floor restaurant and second floor, two-bedroom apartment. Because this depends on the other application, I would, I would like us to receive and then table this so that it goes with the other application. So I would entertain a motion to receive and table Planning and Zoning Commission 23-21.
I would like to make the motion to receive PZC-23-21, 88 West Main Street. Map 45, lot, lot 13, lot 26. Okay, and this is linked into PZC 2320, right?
Right.
So this, so it's scheduled to be September 11th, if you have a warning.
Yeah, yeah, a question?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, that was mine.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion carries, I thought I saw-
Cynthia, I believe Cynthia, yeah.
She's here, so please report that she's present.
Thank you. I don't think anybody was seated for her, so I don't-
No, there wasn't anybody seated. Okay. The next item on the agenda, we have public hearings, Planning and Zoning Commission 23-18 for 345 East Main Street, zoning regulation amendment to add multifamily adaptive reuse zone. It's a map, 88 block 69, lot 126. The owner is Victorian Village LLC, and we have an agent, our applicant here. Because these two, the next one is sort of, is very heavily related to it, and I'm afraid the discussion will cover that. I would like to just acknowledge the second one and we can, when we vote on these, we'll have to vote separately, but for discussion purposes, unless there's an objection from the commission, I would like to have them discussed together. Are there any objections to that?
No objection over here, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so the other item is Planning and Zoning Commission 23-19, 45, 345 East Main Street, zoning amendment subject, rezoned subject property to Mars. And again, this is owner of Victorian Village LLC. So the first part, just to clarify, the first part is the change to the regulations to allow from Mars, and then the second is, once that's been done, is to site this at this property. Okay, so that's the two, that's why they're related. Agent or applicant, if you could identify yourself, please?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, good evening, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, my name's Andrea Gomes, I'm the attorney for the applicant. With me tonight is Al Wolfgram, he is our engineer via Zoom, we should also have Daniel Ackerman, who is a representative of the applicant, and Mark Petrin, our architect, who are again, both on virtually, I believe, I saw Mark, I'm not sure I saw Daniel, but I, I'm told they're on. So as the commission recalls, we came before the commission virtually in May to discuss this proposal as a pre-application. We took the commission's comments and questions to heart, we consulted with town staff on their preliminary comments on the application, and the application that's before the commission tonight for a regulation amendment and a rezoning or a zoning map change is the culmination of all those comments and questions put together into what the commission has before it now, which we filed on June 30th. Before I get into that, I do, putting my lawyer hat on, just want to add a couple of procedural housekeeping items in for the record so the commission's aware. We did properly complete the abutter mailing, the posting of the sign, and the filing of the text amendment and the rezoning map with the town clerk as required by state statute. Proof of everything was submitted to town staff while in advance of tonight's meeting. The public hearing notice was also properly published in the newspaper, a big thank you to, again, Abby and Christie for taking care of that. And yet another thank you to town staff for submitting the referral to River Cog and the town of Westbrook, as is required by the zoning regulations, of course. As far as I'm aware, we have not heard anything from the town of Westbrook, but we did receive some pretty likely comments from River Cog, which I will get to in just a few minutes in my presentation. So with that, I'll dive right in, Abby, if you could go to the next slide. And I appreciate this very high-tech setup, it's pretty impressive. So the site is about 1.82 acres near the Clinton-Westbrook town line, the commission can see it designated here with that little red dot, if you will, in, pretty much in the middle of the screen. It's located in the I-2 zone where motels, bed and breakfasts, and daycares are permitted via special exception, among a variety of other uses. More broadly, though, as the commission can see from this aerial, the site is surrounded by a variety of other uses. We have Quality Propane to the north, Goodwill to the east, Grove Garden Florist to the west, and there are also a number of restaurants in the area, including Westbrook Lobster and Land of Tide just across East Main Street. Importantly, here, there are a large number of residential uses in the area as well. We have a large residential development located to the west on Bluff Avenue and surrounding streets. The Grove Beach Senior Park, which is a 55-plus manufactured home community, is located to the east, just over the town line in Westbrook. And it's also worth noting that we have a number of public bus stops along East Main Street, which the commission, it's hard to see from this distance, but the commission can see them designated with the little bus symbols. There's actually one directly to the east of the site, right in front of Goodwill, and then two on either side of Main Street, directly to the west, in front of Grove Garden Florist. As the commission, next slide, please. Thank you, as the commission likely knows, Victorian Village Inn is comprised of, it's an existing developed site, it's comprised of 12 buildings. And while it historically was used as a motel, hence Victorian Village Inn, it has been used in more recent years as a short-term residential development. These same photos, by the way, are at tab one, exhibit A, I believe, if the commission wanted to take a closer look, next slide, please. And this is just a street view of Victorian Village Inn, thanks to Google Street View. This is standing on, of course, East Main Street, looking more in a northwesterly direction, and next slide, Abby. This is standing on East Main Street, looking more in a northeasterly direction. And the next slide, thank you. So the applicant's plan is to demolish the four buildings that were located on the northwest corner of the site, renovate the remaining eight buildings into 14 one-bedroom rental units, and construct one new building at the rear of the site or the north of the site, containing 26 one-bedroom rental units. We've made several changes to the-
Separate, we're going to do this project specifically.
Well, yeah, she's doing more of B than A right now, you're correct.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I didn't hear you.
I thought we were trying to keep the two-
For voting, we need to keep them separate, but in terms of what they're doing, why don't we help us, I think, is if we dealt with the amendment first.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman, I did discuss with town staff in advance, we were going to do the public hearings together, and we thought that this would illustrate the text amendment, that's usually what we typically do for zoning regulation amendment, is provide a conceptual site plan. Commissions like to see kind of the proof is in the pudding, if you will. So I'm only going to touch on this for just a few moments, if I may, and I will continue on on some of the comments. So ju-just so that the commission's aware, and this does go into some of the provisions that are in the proposed MARZ regulation amendment, the plan was revised to increase, and this is in response to commission and staff comments, increase the affordability from 10 to 15% of the units, as the commission may recall, for the pre-application, we suggested density bonus if the MARZ applicant came forward with 10% deed restricted at 80% of the area median income. In response to staff comments, we increased that to 15%. So now on this plan, it would be six of the units would be preserved. We noted explicitly the gazebo that's kind of located just, just above the parking lot, if you will, or to the west of the parking lot, to accompany the stone barbecue area for some resident amenity space. And then we did note, and I do remember specifically, this was a commission, a comment from one of the commissioners, we did note two parking spaces with electric vehicle charging stations and four what's called EV-ready spaces. So those are all things that we incorporated into the plan and took into account in drafting the MARZ in response to commission and staff comments. So tonight, in order to eventually get this built, we're here for what I'll call part one of the approvals process, the zoning regulation amendment and the rezoning, and more specifically, an application to land the MARZ as a floating zone on the subject property. If approved, and I think this is important for the commission to hear, if approved, of course, the commission, we will be coming back to the commission with a special exception and site plan application, at which time the commission will be able to evaluate all the nitty-gritty, if you will, the traffic, the stormwater, the everything along those lines. So before I hand it over to Al and then Mark to again, discuss high-level conceptual design for the site, I wanted to just comment quickly on the staff report issued by Ms. Pierceall and on the comments that were issued by River Cog with respect to the proposed regulation amendment. Ms. Pierceall suggested, and I'll touch on the staff report first, that we modify the proposed MARZ to allow 15 dwelling units per acre, rather than creating a density bonus if an MARZ applicant came forward with affordable units, and then requiring that all MARZ applicants provide 15% affordable. I explained this to Ms. Pierceall in an email earlier today, but to let the commission know, we are more than happy to revise the regulation, as suggested by town staff. The commission can certainly impose that as a condition of its approval here, if it chose to proceed along those lines.
If I may interrupt for one second.
Absolutely.
15% is at the 80% of the median, correct?
Correct. Correct. At or below, the mission. In her staff report, and of course, I'm not speaking for Ms. Pierceall, the commission can certainly confirm with her, but I think that it's important to note that she explains that the MARZ may be landed on, not only on our subject property, but potentially on other properties along the East Main Street corridor. She notes, as we said in our submitted letter, that this helps avoid the issue of spot zoning, that's at page, page three. And then she also focuses on the compatibility of our proposing with zoning generally, noting the variety of residential uses in the greater vicinity of the site. And of course, noting compliance with the POCD, including how our proposal furthers a number of POCD goals for the East End planning area, including the renovation or reconstruction of properties along this gateway or this corridor in from Westbrook. With respect to the River Cog comments, I was actually just explaining to Mr. Wolfgram, it's atypical in my experience to see lengthy comments from a cog. Usually when we refer an application out, we get a one paragraph or one sentence letter from the cog saying no, no anticipated impact, so it was fairly unusual, again, in my experience, to see these detailed comments on the proposed zoning regulation amendment. I won't rehash the three-plus-page, single-spaced letter here. But I'll note that River Cog agrees the provision of single-family units, particularly the ones that we've agreed to deed restrict here as affordable, is in line with the River Cog's state and local POCD, as all the plans recognize the need for affordable housing, and this is a mechanism to get that into the town of Clinton. The letter highlights the benefits of the applicant's proposed sidewalk improvements along the site frontage, given the mix of commercial and residential uses in the area, and it confirms, again, the consistency of the MARZ with the regional POCD. Ultimately, the punchline to the letter, if you will, is that the River Cog believes there will likely be no significant intermunicipal impacts if the MARZ were to be adopted, the site rezoned and the proposed community rebuilt, which is really what the River Cog is looking at. And so concluding, it explained that the need for housing in the region overrides the concern potentially with density on-site, and notes that in any event, similar densities exist in the nearby vicinity. And of course, it, the letter explicitly agrees that the proposed plan will enhance the East Main Street or Route 1 corridor into Clinton from the town of Westbrook. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I will hand it over to Mr. Wolfgram, he'll touch just very generally on the conceptual site plan. I'll then just forecasting for the commission, ask Mr. Petrin to talk about the proposed site design. Again, this all goes to giving the commission an idea of what will eventually come before it, if these two applications are approved tonight, and then I will conclude, if I may.
Al Wolfgram, for the record. Can I stand over here, will that-
Just make sure you're speaking up for the-
Just very briefly, the basics that we've incorporated into this project are a one-way in, roadway, one-way out. We have central parking, which is consistent with the, the ratio is with the regulations. We have provided for emergency access, vehicle access to the center, emergency access loop around the back. And we're keeping, as, as was said, keeping the basic structures in the front as they are. There's four structures back here that we're taking out, and this is the U-shaped, two-story, proposed multifamily building with 26 one-bedroom units. That's really that in a nutshell. The site data here is consistent with the regulations that we're proposing. We have continued the walkway in the front, which was noticed by River Cog. Couple of other things we have to discuss with them, but in basics, this is what we're proposing.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll just note for the commission, before I hand it over to Mark virtually, that when we drafted the proposed MARZ regulation, we looked at, of course, we're dealing with a partly developed site, which is, that we're keeping a large portion of, but we did look at the underlying standards for the I-2 zoning district, and a lot of the bulk standards that the commission will see are either equal to or more restrictive than the underlying zoning regulations, and/or we are making our site more compliant in accordance with the I-2. Of course, if the commission approves the MARZ and the landing of the floating zone, the MARZ standards will apply, but I wanted the commission to know, we, we did look at the existing regulations, not only with bulk standards, but with things like stormwater management and parking and et cetera. So with that, I'll ask Mark if he is on.
I am here.
Perfect, thank you.
Go ahead.
I think, next slide, Abby. Thank you, Mark, you can go ahead.
Yes, I'm happy to provide an architectural narrative to the zoning board regarding the 26-unit multifamily building with the following elements. The new complex will have 26, 650 square foot, one-bedroom units on two levels. The exterior walls facing the property lines, we're going to provide soundproof insulation as an upgrade to the complex. We're going to incorporate, we're going to have room for solar panels on the south wall, south, south roof, and we're going to incorporate sustainable construction methods and materials shall be incorporated. All materials be locally sourced. The 26-unit affordable, I'm sorry, multi-living complex features, feature traditional and stylish design with a hip roof, large overhangs, covered with architectural shingles that provide a lasting protection for the building. The exterior of the building will be, feature a mix of, of cement, cement clapboard siding, including some scalloped shingle accents that add a touch to the elegance of the design. The windows and sliding doors are high-quality, innocent products that feature hurricane-resistant glass to provide for, for extreme weather conditions. The railings and balconies and the patio areas are designed to resemble wrought iron of a durable aluminum material, which gives a longevity to the building's aesthetic. The building also boasts of stately square columns. And each unit will provide a patio and balcony area, providing residents with space to enjoy fresh air in the surroundings. Energy-efficient walls and ceilings are insulated with closed cell phone to provide maximum insulation, reducing heat loss. All outdoor lighting will be LED exterior lighting, providing visibility at night and reducing energy consumption. The art on the existing site, there are seven buildings that are going to be renovated, and they are going to be in the same materials as the existing building, the new building. We're going to incorporate the same siding, the same roofing, the same windows to incorporate them to blend with the existing site. The proposed design will hopefully with stylish and affordable living space that blends modern and traditional elements to create a timeless aesthetic. That's it, I'm, I'm good.
Thank you, Mark.
May I have one question, please, Mr. Chairman? You mentioned about the heating, is there heat gas or electric?
As you know, there are different building standards right now, at this point, nobody uses gas anymore. We're going to be using energy-efficient electric heat pumps throughout.
I'm concerned you're not addressing 2318. I mean, that, that's really the one that we need to hear about first, I'd really like to hear about the change, the amendments to zoning regulations to create this MARZ.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman, I can go into more detail on-
Yeah, because I thought, I mean, that's the first item, and I really haven't heard anything, I'm hearing stuff that should be a special exception meeting in a few months.
Understood, Mr. Chairman, and again, just so you know, just so the commission knows, that wasn't us trying to skip over the MARZ, it was just to show kind of visually what will eventually happen if this, this is proposed. So the proposed zoning regulation amendment, the MARZ, that is at tab two, it really, again, started with the existing zoning regulations, looking in particular at the floating zones that are in the regulations, and we tried to match the structure and tweak it as needed to redevelop the site. We started with, again, the underlying I-2 bulk standards, recognizing that it is a partly, it is a developed site. So we were able to, again, comply with or match a number of the I-2 bulk standards with the proposed development, and then ultimately tweak them as necessary to incorporate what we needed on the site. We did add some revisions to the regulation after the pre-application at the request of town staff, we were very specific- After the pre-application at the request of town staff, we were very specific, for example, on the types of accessory uses that are permitted on site. The, well, I'll start primarily, the primary use would be multiple unit dwellings, which could be in one or more buildings as we have proposed here. But then we were more specific on the accessory uses um, that could be permitted on site, which include off street parking, outdoor recreation areas. And then a customary home occupation and a dwelling subject to the standards elsewhere in the regulation. Um, we then go on to the bulk standards. We incorporate off street parking requirements, again, matching, trying to match the format in the existing regulations, providing both a maximum and a minimum. At the suggestion of town staff. Um, we have provisions for utilities, landscaping, sidewalk improvement, stormwater management. Soil erosion and sediment control, all of which generally match provisions already in the regulations and or explicitly refer to those other provisions. Again, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel here. We're just trying to do what we need to do to re- redevelop this already existing site. Um, and then the uh, more unusual thing, of course, is that affordability provision at the very end of the regulation. And that was what I originally mentioned in the staff report. We had originally suggested a density bonus. If an applicant came forward with a proposal to deed restrict uh, fifteen percent of the units. Uh, as affordable for eighty percent families or persons making at or eighty percent. Um, eighty percent or below the area median income at staff's suggestion. We are more than happy to amend that to go with the higher density, the fifteen units per one half acre. In exchange for a requirement that an M A R Z applicant provide affordable units, fifteen percent of the total unit count. Um, and then ultimately, the last thing we did, again, just trying to uh, stay in line with how the existing regulations are written. We went through the charts that the commission has at section twenty seven point three regarding permitted uses. And we added uh, the M A R Z to that. Pretty much everything I think will be Xed out, if you will, except for multiple unit dwellings and uh, the accessory uses I noted earlier. So that's how we went about the zoning regulation process. And then, of course. Uh, part of the commission's purview here is examining that in line with compliance with the P O C D. Uh, which I will get into in my closing comments in just a moment, but I'll stop there and see if there's any other questions I may address regarding the M A R Z specifically.
Are there questions from the commission before we go ahead?
A couple of things, I, I um. Looking at the standard, I see where you, you came up with them. One that concerns me is, is. The maximum building height of fifty feet, which wow. It's what we have for our I two. I'm not sure that if we're gonna do a floating zone, and I'm comfortable with that, where thirty five or forty feet. Much more consistent with the rest of the town. Just picturing Route One and hard pressed to, where most of our I two is, hard pressed to see a fifty foot building on. Through one, so that um, is, is one thing that I noted. And the second, under stormwater management, you basically state you'll make it better than what's there. And I don't know why everyone just um, meet whatever the current regulations are for stormwater management.
If, if I may reply, Commissioner, uh, regarding building height, eh, typically what we do, we try to match the underlying regulations here. I, I. The height of the building, how, off the top of your head, do you know?
Um, normally, two story is a thirty five foot um, I remember, which is fine with us.
Yeah, I, I would, the only reason Commissioner I'd suggest maybe going to forty is just in case there's. I, I don't have the definition of how you calculate building height. Some, some municipalities have a pretty complicated calculation. But I'd suggest going forty. It was not our intention to. Blindside the commission with a fifty foot building down going. Yeah, understood.
Worry about the next person.
Yeah, it's still building, still.
Anywhere around that area is close to.
Understood.
Forty is much more comfortable number for me.
We, we'd be happy to do forty feet in height. Um, and amend the regulation accordingly regarding to uh, stormwater management. I'll turn to Mr. Wolfgram. I don't believe there's an issue with that, but I'll, I'll ask him.
Last time I looked at the regulation, I don't believe there were very specific stormwater regulations in your zoning regs. Um, I know in other towns that have, you know, official stormwater reports, you go to off to a hundred years storm proof. For that, and um, that's why the language was, was to conform to the current town's policy. I'm not sure what that is. But we do have flexibility to um, do some stormwater management into the twenty fifth year. Uh, period that's, that's come. We just didn't do that because the regulations don't, don't have that specific as far as the last time I looked.
They, they, they don't, um, they do have essentially what we look for is compliance with the two thousand and fourth quarter policy. And, and.
What was that?
They, I'll let Ms. Pierce all speak, apologies. So is that, there, there are no separate specific stormwater standards? So essentially, we would be looking for compliance with the two thousand and four stormwater quality.
Oh, sure. Okay. Yeah, yeah, understand.
And it's the commission, I'll watch him still frame again, and it's a partly developed site. I don't believe that that would be a problem if we wanted to incorporate in accordance with the two thousand and four. Stormwater quality.
Yeah, no, I think we're, we're good with that.
Um.
Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, of the uh, the regulation as proposed is certainly very specifically written. That is, it looks like it. You're proposing that it can be landed only in an I two zone and only on East Main Street. Uh, you also have some pretty restrictive uh, notions in terms of, I think it's between two and four acres or whatever. Um. So while you're calling it a uh, a floating zone that could be landed anywhere. It, it really does appear to be written quite specifically for this particular uh, location, specifically. Do also include the notion of adaptive reuse in it. However, as written, I believe it is not necessarily limited to adaptive reuse. He specifically. State that new construction is permitted in this zone. So. Uh, as written, uh, I believe, maybe Abby's the person to get the opinion on this. This could actually, this. Floating zone could actually be landed on a uh, a vacant lot. Is that correct?
Correct. I, I noted in the staff report, three parcels, including this one, that meant dimensional requirements of um, the, the standards in the Mars. Of the proposed Mars language. However, other parcels could be combined, subdivided um, and then repurposed. Whether vacant or not to qualify.
So basically, in reality, this could theoretically be applied anywhere in the I two district. I think that's something we have to keep.
That fronts on East Main Street that has the correct frontage.
Yeah, yes. But still, it's uh, it's pretty much a wide open field.
Commissioner, through you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Uh, respectfully, Commissioner, I disagree with wide open field, and that's partly why we drafted the regulation to be as specific as Commissioner Dahlgren had indicated. It's always a, a um, a balancing act, if you will. Drafting a regulation, especially in this instance where there are P O C D goals that we think we further, right? The redevelopment of the corridor into Clinton for Westbrook, the provision of additional housing, et cetera, et cetera. It's a balancing act of trying to draft the regulation narrowly enough so that the commission feels comfortable approving the application. And finding that it complies with the P O C D without opening a Pandora's box, so to speak. Um, but then drafting it so that it could potentially be applied and continue to further those P O C D goals. I will note that any applicant that would want to come forward with an M A R Z would first have to come to this commission. And receive approval to land the M A or M A R Z, excuse me, on their property. They'd have to meet all of these requirements. And if the commission approved that, then they would be required to come back with special exception and site plan application. So. It, uh, the reason I wanted to respectfully push back on the wide open field was, this is not a free for all and changing East Main Street. It's a mechanism by which the commission can open the door a crack, I'll say, to the redevelopment.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the, the once, if we were to approve this Mars zone. It kind of changes the uh. The burden, if you will, not completely, but it kind of changes the burden because we have, we're essentially saying, we agree that this is applicable. Or should be applicable anywhere in that I two zone that meets the requirements there. So we're put in a very difficult position should one comes up, should another application comes up that meets the criteria, so to speak. Uh, and if we were to deny it, and in my opinion, these floating zones are just a dangerous thing for any town to have. Uh, I would, I would much rather see a zone change, maybe, you know, change that zone to something else that could incorporate this type of use. This is the type of use that makes people say, this is favoritism, the, the fix was in, this is the type of thing that does that. Because it leaves so much up to opinion for not, not so much this application, but for another application when it comes along. It puts this commission and puts the town in a very tough predicament. And as I said, it opens up the door for speculation, whether it's warranted or not. That certain people receive favoritism. In my opinion, zoning regulations should be black and white as much as possible. And this is a very, very light gray will go down this way.
I, 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 I agree with both, um, because. We have, is what, what, what's in your favor is all the other um, buildings around you. All the zones that are around you fit into what you're doing and you use it, use it a lot of the. Existing buildings, but there are other places that this can go to, right? I will mention, but you're on Route One. And, and, and it's exactly, uh, actually floating zone is, it's more like a, a, a spot zone. It does, it does show favoritism. We went through before recently with um. Uh, a building in town and um, but there are other areas on Route One. That could say the same, you know, do the same thing that we're gonna do for you.
In, in addition, I know that you noted certain uh. Things that are in the plan of conservation development that you said it's consistent with, but it's directly inconsistent if you look at that zone. Under specific action items, which is encourage residents to develop, developments in areas not fronting Route One. In other words, they want to reserve Route One frontage for commercial development. Not necessarily that whole zone, but the commercial development should be fronted on Route One and maintained that way. I mean. That's where, that's where your tax revenue comes from, commercial development as opposed to residential. And again, I, I just think that floating zones are a bad idea and, and uh, not a good road to go down. It's, is my opinion.
Well, go, go ahead, Anthony.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, but a, a lot to unpack there, and I'm probably not gonna go in order, so forgive me for that.
Alright.
Commissioner Alberino, uh, and I will get into this in my closing comments in just a second, but floating zones are not spot zoning. Two completely different things, and I understand that you were not speaking from the legal perspective, but I just wanted.
Right, I wasn't speaking from the legal perspect, perspective, but it, it almost. They're, they're co- coincide with each other.
It's, it's a way to.
Well, please, the uh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The floating zone mechanism is frequently used. And we see it, one of the, the bigger um, ones that come to mind is around Jackson Laboratories in Farmington. When they're developing an area and there are existing uses that are not really in line with the long term plan for the area. Commissions or towns, if I may, will use the floating zone as a tool to allow the commission to determine. And again, the commission, keep in mind, has legally, has the discretion to determine whether each individual application for a floating zone. Meets the standards in the regulations and ultimately complies with the planning and zoning commission, or plan of conservation and development, excuse me. So keep in mind, the commission retains that discretion. The concern is always the precedential value of an approval, right? Is if we approve this, what's going to happen when the next developer or the developer after that comes before the commission? We drafted again the M A R Z, that fine balance to be specific but broad. As of right now, you're only looking, I think, uh, Ms. Pierce all said, three properties along the East Main Street corridor. But generally, the commission retains the discretion to determine if it is compliant with the plan of conservation and development. More importantly, let's say the commission did feel the need to approve an application for a floating zone to the M A. For to land the floating zone, the M A R Z on an app, on a subject property. The applicant still has to come forward and get an approval for a special exception with site plan approval. The commission's discretion, as you can see in your own regulations, uh, the decision criteria is extraordinary, is extraordinary in that instance. The commission is looking at everything from stormwater management to traffic, to um, to uh, circulation, pedestrian safety. And the list goes on. So I understand the commission's concern with the precedential value, but the floating zone is an important tool to ensure the redevelopment. Of the, of, of an area. Now, Commissioner, you had referenced a, a provision. Did you say it was in the P O C D requiring commercial fronting on the I two?
It doesn't require it in, in this, but it says right here in the specific actions. This is for the east end, east end planning focus area, which this is part of.
Yes.
And then under number six, specific actions, and it lists several. And the one, two, three, four, five, six went down. Encourage resident, residential developments in areas not fronting Route One. This, as you well know, fronts Route One.
No, understood. And uh, I, I would also say again, the plan of conservation and development, it's an advisory document. It's important here. It sets forth the plan. There are also other provisions in the P O C D explicitly showing that this is eligible for affordable housing. So. It's, it's all in all, the commission's prerogative to determine what furthers the P O C D goals. I again refer the commission, I, I, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but the list of uh, goals that we further with this application. In our letter at tab one and then um, at the uh, tab seven, spot zoning. Yes, thank you. And Mr. Wolfgram, of course, is reminding me of, of um, the fact that this is a preexisting residential use. Um, so we're taking and uh, you stole my thunder a little bit, Al, on my closing comments. But it is a preexisting residential use. We are taking it and improving it, providing additional needed housing. Improving sidewalks, landscaping, traffic circulation.
Leaving a lot of what?
I'm sorry?
Leaving a lot of the building.
Yes, yes. I, I think we're leaving eight of the buildings, improving those. Improving those and then uh, building the additional housing. I believe it was uh, the River Cog letter that said that concerns with density, for example, are outweighed. By the need to provide this type of housing in town and in the region. So, well, that I'll stop jabbering.
Thank you, um.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't get also, I have a hurry, is nothing.
Do that.
Just yeah.
Oh.
For some reason, our, our video seems to be frozen on the display screens here, but, but it is uh, um, it's ready to comment.
Okay, go, go right ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm in uh, I'm in London, so I'm trying to. Make sure this is all working tonight for me. Um, so I do have a question and maybe Abby, you can answer this um, for me. So we've talked about that this is already being a preexisting residential use, and it is supposed to be for short term um, rental purposes. But it's actually not. Um, I think as was stated um, in your memos, uh, housing long term residents. And so my concern is that um. We have house, we have long term housing residents there, and we haven't talked about um, them being displaced by this. Um, excuse me. And that's really where a, a lot of my concern is coming from, is that we have residents who can afford to live in long term rentals. And because they can't most likely afford to live in apartments or buy a home in Clinton. And I'm concerned that uh, we haven't talked about, really, will they be displaced? Has anybody spoken with them? Um. Have the contractors, has the attorney spoken with them? Is there a plan for um, these people that are living there? I do know that quite a few of them um, are immigrants to this country. Uh, and so I, I'm just extremely and extraordinarily concerned about their well being. And where they will be if we, if the uh, zoning goes through at this.
Thank you.
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman. The phrase short term residential development doesn't mean that people aren't there uh, for months or potentially years. It very frequently just means that there are month to month leases or shorter leases than the typical one plus year lease you see. In a uh, what I'll call a long term rental residential development. So, um, I certainly uh, understand Commissioner. Uh, Latieri's concerns with the phraseology here. So I just wanted to make that clear. With respect to the resi- existing residents and what will happen with them um, going forward. This is the first step to the development process. Um, I, I have personally not had a conversation with the existing residents. I don't believe Mr. Wolfgram has. Um, and I haven't had even a conversation with um, with uh, representatives of the applicant about next steps. I will tell you that generally, particularly, I do a lot of work in the affordable housing context. We get this question a lot. Uh, existing resident or um, and I'm talking both in the community and Clinton resident. Preferences for rentals um, starts uh, impeding on Fair Housing Act implications. Because as you can imagine, that starts perpetrating the inability of people to move and um, have fair access to housing. So uh, we'd have to examine that a little bit, but uh, we could certainly come back. So, uh, we'd have to examine that a little bit, but, uh, we could certainly come back to the commission at the time of the special exception application with a more complete answer.
May I ask a question, Mr.?
And, and the, the only other thing I was going to suggest was that Mr. Ackerman should be on the, I can't see him, but he should be on the line. And Daniel, did you have anything to add to that?
Yes, I'm on the line. And the only thing I would add to your, your comments would be. It'd be our intention to try to retain, uh, the current tendency as much as possible. And we'd work with them in order to do so. And, and, and as, uh, our attorney pointed out. Uh, a good number of them are already, uh, close to one-year leases as it is. Thank you.
Yeah, and in regards to this, this was Terry's, um, comments, um. If, is there a way of the people, how many people that, once you find out how many people live there and when, when the leases are up? Is there a way to, um, as they gradually move, move into, uh, into the same. After you redo one section, to move those people that were gonna, um. Yeah, I mean, instead of telling, cause I, I never thought about that till just now, man. That's heart-wrenching to tell people to go find a new place.
There are families who live there.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I'm just saying, man. I, I read, I haven't acquired it. This is incredibly long.
Yeah.
That people looking for a reasonable place to, to live, so. What, what they're paying now, what, would you guys make exceptions and help these people out?
We're getting off topic. Whether we want to incorporate a floating zone into our regulations.
Well, then can I, can I add that?
And, and it would be more of the special exception.
Can I just add that I do believe that Clinton does need more affordable housing? We do, um, we have a lot of, uh. I'm not sure how many, I know that we were told that there are, is a great need for the single, um, units with maybe two people. But I do overall think that Clinton absolutely does need more affordable housing, um. I, I think that we should, if there's any way to increase that percentage from fifteen percent to twenty percent. Um. Of the units being affordable. I think that's more digestible. I don't want to have, I don't think that Clinton needs more apartments or houses. Um, being built that are, you know, three thousand dollars a month that. Current, you know, people looking to move to the shoreline, um, won't even be able, you know, wouldn't be able to afford. So that, you know, there's a lot of concern for me with affordability, especially if we're gonna be, um. You know, changing the zoning.
Yes, and we're ready to address that, and we're not looking to. Guard your exorbitant prices, um, for these new units, by the way, and, and price people out. That's not the intention. Also, just one other thing I'd like to point out is the redevelopment proposal. It's really sort of isolated to one portion of the site. So as it relates to the current tendency, we would try our best not to disturb them and to retain them as much as possible, as I mentioned earlier. Thank you.
As, as noted, that, I'd like to get us back on to, on track in relation to the site plan. Uh, or the special exception that would be coming, so if we can, uh, stay focused on the, uh, M A R Z. Go ahead, Bo.
Just a quick question, if I understand it correctly, the affordability component that's built into the regulation. Only applies if the density gets up to fifteen units per acre, per half acre, correct?
Uh, if I may, through you, Mr. Chairman, so the way the regulation is, and I think I'm answering your question, Commissioner, Commissioner. The way the regulation is currently written is that they're, and this was done in consultation with town staff. Months back when we were talking preliminaries. The regulation was originally drafted to provide, I believe, a density of, um, ten. Ten units per half acre. However, if the applicant would be willing to preserve, originally we had proposed in ten of percent of its units. As affordable, eighty percent were below A M I, then the density would, we'd have a bonus and you could go up to fifteen. Units for, per half acre maximum density. Ms. Pierceall had suggested in her staff report that we just eliminate the density bonus altogether. And make affordable housing for an M A R Z mandatory, such that the proposed maximum density would be fifteen. The higher one, the fifteen units per one-half acre, and that all M A R Z applicants would be required to preserve fifteen percent of the units. At eighty percent or below.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, so we, we've accepted that and we're happy to incorporate that change. Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to respond to Commissioner Latieri's, uh, commentary on the affordability. We, we started at ten percent, we have gone up to fifteen percent, um, affordability. Uh, we've, we've evaluated that and that's, uh, where we need to stay in order to be able to develop this proper, this property appropriately. However, I will say that even the units that are not going to be deed restricted, these are not going to be, as Commissioner Latieri's, uh. Was concerned about three thousand dollar per month luxury, uh, one-bedroom apartments. They will be within the reach of moderate income households. So I just wanted to make that clear for, for the record.
Thank you. Okay, um, go ahead.
Yeah, um, my question was, did you consider any approach other than a floating zone? Uh, towards the rezoning that you need. Uh, the reason that I, uh, bring this up is that, uh. You know, when the floating zones were adopted as part of our regulation, and that's going back several years now, a number of years. Uh, they were pretty controversial at the time. Um, we have, I, I believe we've landed one floating zone. And that was what the, uh, adoption of floating zones was about at all. Um, we have a P O C D review coming up in a couple of years, and certainly one of the things that would be on the table would be whether or not we wanted to keep. Provision for floating zones in our, uh, uh, as part of our regs at all, or to move forward without them. There is, you know, you've probably figured it out, quite a bit of opposition to the entire notion of using floating zones as a tool. Um, so I'm wondering if you considered any other approach, uh, and, uh. Or, or whether a floating, I mean, this would institutionalize one more floating zone. Making it that much more difficult to reevaluate the entire notion going forward. Did you consider any other approach? And, and we've gotten way, way, way afield, two or three applications down, down from, you know. Shall we establish an M A R Z? Uh, again, you've called it adaptive reuse, but you've written in a way that it's not necessarily adaptive reuse.
Uh, yes, Commissioner, I'm happy to answer that. So yes, we, we, our, our. Victorian Village LLC did not come to us and say, we are going to draft a, a, a floating zone, or we want to propose a floating zone. We knew where we wanted to end up, um, and it was up to us, frankly, to determine the appropriate mechanism to get there. When I first evaluated this, uh, proposal, I called Ms. Pierceall. And I explained to her the different mechanisms by which we might be able to accomplish this. The one that seemed to fit the best and was already a structure that you had available in your zoning regulations was the floating zone mechanism. Um, and here's why. If we didn't do the floating zone, we would have had to do a text amendment to your existing zoning regulations. Whether it be to amend the I two zone, to change things like the uses, the potentially some bulk standards. It would have been messy, to put it, uh, colloquially, to, it would have been very messy to try and nitpick. The various provisions of the I two in order to accommodate this type of redevelopment. So that was not a viable option and Ms. Pierceall agreed. Uh, we also evaluated, uh, just a standalone zone change. Create a whole new zone. Uh, rezone this site. And again, then we got back to the very same concern that the commission expressed when we had our pre-application in May. Which was, well, that could be spot zoning. You're creating a whole new zone just for this one site. So we thought drafting a floating zone, that the commission would have the discretion. Again, drafting it in a way that could potentially apply to other properties in this very small area, relatively speaking with respect to the rest of the town. And providing the commission with the discretion to first land it. And then have to approve a special exception in site plan approval was the cleaner. And more palatable approach to redeveloping the site without frankly, just butchering your existing zoning regulations. So this, you know, it's own standalone. So before we ever put pen to paper, we did run it by town staff. And I, I won't speak for her, but Ms. Pierceall agreed that was the better path forward.
At this time, I would like to open the hearing up to, uh, comments from the public. We do have people here that want to speak. So if there's anyone here who would like to speak on this application. Uh, please, uh, let us know, give us your name, uh, who you are. Um, we also. We did get a, uh, written correspondence. To be right into the record.
However, the written correspondence is anonymous and I don't believe that our regulations allow. Testimony.
If I could put my name on it, I got an ID if you need it.
Not an ID, just your name.
I'm sorry.
Diana.
Diana.
And Pam, Pamela Chase.
Mr. Chairman, would you like us to move or do you want?
We, we may need to have folks talk a little bit, just because the microphone doesn't have a huge range. Just make sure we get your comments on record, if you could come up a little bit.
Well, I was gonna go ahead and let, uh.
Whether we're, uh, whether we're having public comments on the zone change or on the entire concept or what?
It, right now, we're doing it together, so. Go ahead and read the.
All right. All right, uh, and this, uh, is from Pamela Chase, is that correct?
Pamela Chase, tenants of three forty-five.
All right.
Yeah, unit one oh six, eight.
Trying to clarify who, who it was from, okay. Ray, three, four, five, East Main Street, uh, Dear Zoning Commission. If this development happens as planned, there will be at least thirty-five people left permanently homeless. These people are mostly manual laborers and can't afford those COVID red prices. We go to bed hopeless and we wake up more hopeless. Three cabins have lived there thirteen years while. Don Tillo took their rent. Lawyer Gomez states the corridor. Or is in, uh, quotations, where Victorian Village is, doesn't have a welcoming and cohesive unquote character. But if you look at their schematics, it's a big old parking lot with high-vac buildings. Friends, sixty car spaces, uh, and trends. Nothing welcoming or cohesive about that. It also behooves me that you would approve stacking bodies next to sound petroleum. As if nothing ever goes wrong with propane. If you can change up the designation quote industrial to suit. The, the Tillos, you could also approve it for another, other. Star outside the box idea, a land swap. Heyday antique slot, two hundred feet down road for Victorian Village. Being vacant heyday can be developed immediately without making thirty-five people homeless or the propane threat. Please consider it, it's signed anonymous tenant.
Thank you. Okay, uh, um, there, anyone else from the public who would like to speak? And provide evidence. You may add something. Step forward, go, the microphone actually.
We haven't been told anything about what's going on. We found out by total accident to, uh, acquaintance. That, um, that the property, when the sign went up, that, uh, this public meeting was happening, then we heard. As far as the owners, they're not contacting us or telling us anything that's going on. And I don't believe any of the thirty-five people on the front row that live there have been told anything either. Um, otherwise they might be here, you know, but, um. Just like the lady says, we're terrified about being homeless. I understand that Mr. Victorian do whatever they want to, but, uh. They're making it affordable, going to the rich, you know, affordable housing. It's a base amount of sixty thousand per income for, um. Affordable housing, the base amount, I think, sixty thousand. We don't even together like twenty-two thousand. For, uh, but I'm just saying, a lot of people are gonna end up homeless at the, at the end of all of this. But, um, yeah, I just proposed the idea because South Petroleum owns Heyday. And this would take away the petroleum problem. That the designation next to petroleum, you know, like it's planned or some petroleum, um. Wouldn't be a problem if Heyday was the lot instead of Victorian Village. Now, but as far as. Like I said, the way they had it set up, it's a big parking lot. I don't know how that, um, accentuates or is cohesive, you know. Has character to Route, Route, uh, one, um, you know. I understand that he wants to maximize the use, you know, for profit, but a lot of people are gonna need cash.
There anyone else from the public who would like to speak? Hearing none, um, of, also return this to the commission. Are there any other questions at this time? Okay, what I would like to do is clarify what some of the conditions were for the, uh. Zoning regulation. Um, I heard two, I missed one, I think. I thought there were three, but the two that I got is the change to a forty-foot. Uh, maximum height from the fifty. So that would be a condition on this. And the other, uh, we have to do it as a condition is require that, uh, fifteen percent of units are affordable. Because I don't believe that's in there right now. That's a condition, fifteen percent affordable, so that you can go to the, uh, fifteen units per half acre.
Correct, Mr. Chairman, and there was, uh, so just if I may tweak for the record, the, the language. So we would amend the M A R Z to require the provision of fifteen percent of the M A R Z units. To be deed restricted affordable for families or persons earning at or below eighty percent A M I. And then we would also be amending the M A R Z to change the maximum density to fifteen units per one-half acre. Um, I would just for the record, refer to Ms. Pierceall's suggested language revision in her staff report. And then the third condition, Mr. Chairman, was to reference explicitly the two thousand four Stormwater Quality Manual. In the M A R Z provision regarding stormwater. Um, I suggest that the commission condition that on language satisfactory to town staff, for example. That way it gives us a little wiggle room on the exact way to incorporate that. Um, Mr. Chairman, I just before, and I don't want to interrupt, but just before the commission certainly asked as many questions. But I had, do have a couple of closing comments. I just wanted to get in there before the public Karen closed, if that's.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not quite ready to add it. Um, go ahead.
Chairman, um, when Josh Wachowski was there, or Tom Barrett, he, he spoke how he felt. Could, could we hear your thoughts, Abby? I'd like to hear your thoughts.
Sure, you know, there's, there's basically, uh, there's a couple of things going on here. And I think the, the most important one is, does the, do the applications before you meet the intent and purpose of the plan of conservation and development? Does it advance the goals that the commission has set forward for itself? You have a discretionary opportunity here to say yes or no. One of the things, um, when we were first in, in initial con- in conversation about, uh, this application. Way back when perhaps in my first weeks working with the town, um, in, in late two thousand and twenty-two. Was whether or not is this property could come in under the thirty-G statute provisions, um, for, for housing. And the answer at the time in consultation with the town attorney was that it could not. Because it was to be landed in an I two zone district, and it's sort of the one provision in the state statute that says. Um, if there aren't residential uses already allowed in that district, then that's not sufficient of an option. So it did that sort way back when it kind of began in that realm. And as, um, the applicant worked with staff to sort of say, okay, we, we are bringing an application for what is the best mechanism in the regulations? To enable us to apply, it was narrowed and narrowed into the section twenty-one of floating zones. Because those are the tools available in the regulations as they stand today. Um, you know, again, I think it's, it is, is entirely the commission's discretion about whether or not you believe that this is. Compatible with the existing land use patterns in the area, um, within the distance of this particular property. And so if you look around, there are certainly residential uses in the general area, um, and I included in my staff report. A reference to Westport, since it is so close, um, which is again, why this went to, to River Cod, to the town for, for their reviews. Um, so there is, there is certainly a mixed pattern. The P O C D references also, there's a very mixed. So there is, there is certainly a mixed pattern. The P O C D references also, there's a very mixed pattern of development here. I do agree and believe that in, in the P O C D, some of the, uh. Elements and policy goals to establish, uh, to, to establish gateway elements to address housing concerns. Those are all incredibly important things. Um, it doesn't. Divorce the commission from its responsibility to take a look at the compatibility of the immediate surrounding land uses, um, some of the conflicts that are noted in the P O C D relative to. Excuse me, industrial, residential, um, sorts of conflicts and commercial conflicts that are, that are in that, um, East End planning focus area. And so part of this is, I think the commission needs to wrestle with. Is it compatible enough with surrounding, with the surrounding uses and potential future patterns? Um, to, to be an appropriate use of property. And I, I think, you know, we did hear from the applicant. It's, it's a former residential now. And so, you know, that there is sort of that piece of this, it is existing in a, a longer term residential, um, housing opportunity now. Um, the question is, is it some, is that the use that the commission would like to support at this location in the future? And is it, is it something that the commission wants to open up for that industrial corridor along Route one? In the east part of town? Is that, is that the direction that you would like to enable for, uh, for town? So there's sort of the, are you comfortable with the language of the zoning and do you feel like it achieves the goals and the P O C D to create opportunities for affordable housing? And then the second part of the question, is this the right spot?
I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Abby, but what, what?
I, I mean, I, I'd like to not lead the commission in a direction.
Deliver it.
John, John, John used to like.
I'm not done.
If I may, I didn't get an answer, what she really thinks.
No, it's not, that's not her role.
They know that, just your opinion, just what your opinion.
If I may, I was just gonna commend Abby, just kind of obsolete, you're saying, in my time in Orange, I worked for seven, we had plenty consultants, we didn't have a top planner. Uh, and I'd like to commend Abby, you know, providing us facts and where we should look, but without inserting her own personal preferences or thoughts, I think. I think it should be noted that.
I'm sorry that I did that to you, uh, put you on the spot, I just. With that, um. Are there any other questions from the commission? Go ahead.
This is, I, I am asking Abby to clarify something that you just said, uh, uh, about the eight thirty G. That originally, uh, this property would not be subject to the eight thirty G, uh, approach. Because there were no residential options in the I two zone. But if we approved a floating zone that could be landed in I two, that opened up our entire I two to eight thirty G.
Not to eight thirty G because the floating zone happens on top, so you would have to rezone to enable. That, that element, right? It, it doesn't, it doesn't say any I two zone in town is now. Provided for, it would only allow this housing, this particular housing use subject to the terms of the Mars district. If you then in the future landed the Mars on a particular property or other properties.
But the option of landing the Mars would be in the I two.
That's, that's.
Not necessarily for, for eight thirty.
It doesn't change the, the unentered abuses allowed in I two.
But is, is it true, Abby, if we went to eight thirty G, we lose, we lose all jurisdiction?
Now, there's not an I two, it's not a lot of I two.
They say it was changed, it's all. Let Abby explain that.
So, so the eight thirty G, the, the provisions of eight thirty G would essentially check the burden of proof in terms of finding issues with health or safety. Or general public welfare to the commission versus the applicants. And so much of the time, that's a very difficult hurdle to overcome. And so applicants, why are, uh, commissions often will approve with conditions, um, because they can't find something to overcome that burden, um, you know, and, and those. Do, do, tends to be fairly, which just winds up, um, being carried out for a long time. The, so essentially the, the zoning, the terms of zoning are suspended under eight thirty G in, in practice unless you're in this I two, this, or the, not just I two, but industrial zones. Where residential is not otherwise allowed. And so we had some conversation with the town attorney to that effect. Um, you know, which is why in part we wound up where we are today with a floating zone application request. Because, um, you know, we, we sort of provided some feedback to the applicant that there was this opinion, um, you know, from town council that this would not be, um, inherently. Allowable under eight thirty G in that place for the next question.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, just, I was not, I was not part of the discussion with the town attorney and Abby at that time, my colleague Tim Hollister was. I will note, um, just generally so the commission's aware, there are two types of applications under eight thirty G. There's what's called a set aside development, which is where thirty percent of the units are deed restricted. And then there's assisted housing, which means that there is some, doesn't have to be all, some government money, just to put it colloquially. The industrial exemption, as it's called, uh, prohibits the development of a set aside housing development. In an industrial zone that does not permit residential uses, it does not prohibit assisted housing. So someone could come in tomorrow with an assisted housing application under eight thirty G. Subject to, for example, something the commission's probably heard, Lytech financing, low income housing tax credits is a common mechanism to finance an assisted housing application. So the, the property, um, I generally agree with Ms. Pierceall, but the property would be subject to eight thirty G as long as it's an assisted housing application. Just to confirm that. I don't know if that was part of, I presume.
Right, it was, and it was ours, and it was not part of the provisions of the funding that would be part of the element at times.
Understood. Just to be clear that this, this site isn't totally blocked off from eight thirty G, you know, outstanding.
Um, would landing this require future zones, if, uh, future developments in I two? Also have pre-existing residential use and similar amenities like the sidewalk bus stops? Or would this, this is specific to this develop, uh, idea, uh, project?
Well, when, from what I've read, well, lovely, correct me if I'm wrong. It does not prohibit, it, it can land in, uh, places that don't have existing housing.
In the I two, other I two. Well, the other I two area as well that was indicated.
caveat is that since it's in there, leaves it up to our discretion and makes it easy for us to say no, if there's no adaptive reuse.
Right.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'll just turn the commission to the purpose, kind of the preamble, if you will, to the MARZ. Uh, the purpose is, we called it multi-family adaptive reuse zone because that's what we're doing here and we wanted to kind of capture what it is. But of course, as Commissioner Valgrin did point out, we do provide for the potential development of new buildings. But the, the purpose kind of captured, Mr. Chairman, what you just said, which is, um, the, the goal. One of the policies is to allow for the adaptive reuse and to encourage the development of housing. But Commissioner, as you said, um, it does allow for the provision of new buildings. So it's, it was, again, that balance between broadly drafting and narrowly tailoring.
Um, you had some final comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make it quick. Um, I did want to just comment on, um, the, uh, members of the public who spoke, uh, the, the Chases, I believe it was. I am absolutely not dismissing their concerns with their, their homes. I certainly understand that's important. I will respectfully note that's not applicable to the commission's purview tonight in ruling on these two or voting on these two applications. I'll also just reiterate what Mr. Ackerman said during the public comment period about the hope of, uh, again, broaching that discussion with existing tenants and remind the commission that that's the, the applicant's. Intention going forward, not applicable tonight, but, uh, just important to put that out. And then, um, I do just want to note, and this, uh, it certainly applies to or kind of builds off of what Ms. Pierceall said. Uh, the proposed community is compatible, and I, I don't want to beat a dead horse, it's compatible with the surrounding uses in the area. And I'll, I'll just highlight in, in big bold letters, it's an existing residential use and it has operated as an existing residential use, albeit short term, as we discussed. For a number of years without issue, um, taking that into account, looking at the number of residential properties in the area, just the general transitional nature of the area. Commercial, retail, residential, uh, we, it is, is our contention that it is compatible. And then I know that at the pre-application, the commission was particularly concerned with spot zoning. So I just wanted to touch on that. We included again a revised memo on spot zoning in our application package at tab seven. Uh, the, the law in the state really looks at two prongs when you're looking at spot zoning. Does it apply only to a small area of land? And is it, um, compatible with a comprehensive plan of development? Again, as, as Ms. Pierceall noted in her staff, and with the fact that this floating zone could be landed on potentially additional sites mitigates against it not being applied only to a small area of land. But let's presume even that it were considered a small area of land, um, the compatibility with a comprehensive plan of zoning, which is different from the P O C D. Comprehensive plan of zoning takes a look at your existing regulations, existing uses in the area, um, and so on, which we've outlined in detail. I, I won't go into it again, but we, we do further the comprehensive plan of zoning for all the reasons we've already discussed. And then, of course, uh, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I will again highlight the number of P O C D goals that we are. Furthering with this proposed development, the, the primary being the provision of diverse affordable housing, the redevelopment of, uh, these short-term residential communities into long-term residential communities. And the improvement of the East Main Street Route one corridor into Clinton. Uh, of course, needless to say, this is also in line with the town's affordable housing plan, which notes, um, I think the site, uh, the statistic was thirty-eight percent of Clinton residents are cost burdened. By, by housing, and this would certainly, um, address those concerns as Commissioner Luteri commented, uh, during the, the hearing. With that, I will thank the commission for its time and its patience and its feedback during the pre-application. We think this is a better application altogether. Your name.
At this time. Um, I would. Um, like to entertain a motion to close. The public hearing on, uh, P Z C twenty-three eighteen, we have to vote on these separately, please.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed?
We should probably do it.
You want a roll call?
Can we do it on our motion? This may feel great.
Well, we were, um, the lawyer wanted us to do it, uh, presumed. Things, that, that was why we were doing the roll calls.
Okay, well, we get the actual application, maybe we should do a roll call.
No, I mean, if you'd be more comfortable, Adam, I'm, I'm, it was just, that was an adaptation to Zoom. Um, okay, um, opposed? I didn't finish that. Okay, standing, okay, we're, it was all in favor, I believe, right? Yeah. Okay, um. With that, we'll move on to closing Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, I got it, one twenty-three dash nineteen. The, uh. Re- landing of the, of the. Man, or Mars, um. And the site, uh, so can we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to close P Z C twenty-three dash nineteen, three forty-five East Main.
Okay, I'll have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Um, any discussion on this?
I have a question. Would it be prudent to, uh, keep the public hearing open on that proposal until we, or we're gonna do it's first part? In case we have any specific questions on, on the landing of that site, because we tried to, we tried to focus on the application for the Mars and not too much site specific. Where we might have questions about, uh. You know, appropriate area for that to come down. So I think it might be prudent to hold off and keep the public hearing open on that particular part.
I have no objection to that, we saw.
But we have the motion on the floor.
Yeah, well, it's a motion.
You get a second, then. You like, you know, they'll, they'll keep it open.
Um, that's a. Or, or can I retract my motion? No, we, we can, we can vote on it. We can just vote you down. So. Is there any other, uh, comments and clearly related to what, uh, both?
Yeah, I think both is a good idea.
Yeah, it's great idea. Okay, so in that case, all those in favor of closing the public hearing? Say aye.
Aye.
Number one, okay, all those in favor of keeping the public hearing open? Okay. If the motion fails, public hearing is open. Um, can I have a motion to table this public hearing until, uh, our next regular meeting?
Make a motion, so be it.
No, we don't want to do that. We might want to reopen it, you know, a few minutes depending on what happens.
Yeah.
Until table, until after.
Vote on, uh, yeah.
So, Eddie made the motion. You'll have a second?
What was the motion to?
The motion table until after the other.
To table until, until after the discussion on, after the decision on P Z C twenty-three eighteen.
Right, that's correct.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Thank you. Um, any further discussion?
Hi, excuse me, sorry, Commissioner, I just want to make sure I'm hearing everything correctly, uh, because it's a little garbled when a lot of people are speaking at the same time. So we are voting strictly on twenty-three eighteen right now.
Right now, we're voting on twenty-three nineteen.
Okay, right now, we're voting on P Z C twenty-three nineteen.
Yeah, just whether or not to.
Trying to determine when the, yeah, determining when to, uh, close the public hearing on it, basically. And we don't want to close the public hearing until after. Um, or what we're voting on is to not close the public hearing until after a determination is made on eighteen.
Correct, okay.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so, um, all those in favor of this motion?
This is the motion to postpone.
Good, opposed? Standing, okay, the motion carries, thank you. Um, with that. We are now out of public hearing, so, um, we know the application reviews. We have the option here, uh, let me clear, at this point, we can no longer hear from the public, it is simply the commission, I'm saying that. So everybody understands the rule, um. The. We are not required to make a decision tonight. Although typically, if we feel strongly about something, we do make a decision right away. But I, I just want to make that clear, we have plot that allow us, if we have. Uh, if there's any consideration people want to make. Um, I will allow that consideration to come forward, but. We're not forced to make a decision what we can.
But Mike, I think we should note too that we can't bring in new evidence.
No, you're right, new evidence, the only, the only thing would be if you wanted extra time to consider the conditions. Okay, um. At least, that, that would be what we would be considering, because that's been a change that just happened to, tonight.
And I believe we can't get new information from staff.
From staff.
From staff. Okay, so with that, I would like to open the discussion. Of, and I'm trying to keep them separate at this point, of the, uh, creation of the Mars. Of the, uh, multi-family adaptive reuse zone. Um. Uh. I'll start off again stressing that, um, in our. Public hearing, we did have three different conditions that were, uh, would be. Um, appropriate to add to this that we talked about and were agreed to. Uh, if we, uh, wanted to go with those, okay. Um. The. Purpose of this. Um, the question before us is, does it really fit the planning, you know, the, um. We have conservation, conservation development, do you feel that that's, that is appropriate? Um, and so I would like to hear people's opinion, um, this is our discussion time. Um, I'm going to try to, I'm trying to not. Push you one way or the other, because again, as chair, I try not to do that, and I have screwed that up occasionally. Um, but again, I, I'd like to hear from the commission members, if you would, again, since you can only have one person speaking at a time. Let me know who wants to speak and I'll call on you.
Okay, I'll start, um. Certainly what we saw tonight, you know, does look like an improvement of the corridor coming from Westbrook. I have no dispute about that, um. I, uh, I can see that it, you know, does provide for some low-cost housing. It certainly is an improvement upon what's there. But the, the issue that we're discussing right now actually has to do with the entire, you know, with the approach to our zoning regs and the uh floating zone. The, the entire idea of using floating zones. Uh, anybody who's been listening to me for the last hour or whatever, uh, probably knows that this is something that I have major reservations about. And I have real reservations about expanding the use of floating zones at all. I think that their incorporation into our zoning regs uh, was a mistake when it was made. Uh, I think that it's something we should very be approaching when we uh you know, uh, going forward from here about whether or not we should be using them whatsoever. So I do not mean to impugn the ideas that our applicants have come forward with about the uh redevelopment of a property that probably needs it. But I'm looking at the text of uh what our situation is with our regulations. And uh, I don't, I don't think that I can support this uh adding to what I already consider to be a problem in our zoning regs.
Thank you, uh, Bill.
I'll be brief, and I agree with what Ellen just stated.
Okay.
I think it's problematic for, for the town, and, and again. It also can lead to thoughts or accusations of preference or treatment to certain people, whether that's true or not is another story, but I agree with wholeheartedly with Ellen, with, with Ellen just stated.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else would like to voice opinion on this? Well, I remember when we did it. Go ahead. Uh, CBS, we there was uh accusations, crying all over, for instance. We want, we want to help, and it's for a long time. And we still hear about it, so um in both, in all right, about the about that, so. I'm, I'm, I feel terrible, I mean, that's you know, I don't wanna go through that again.
Go ahead, Adam.
I will say that that previous floating zone had a lot more to it than just dealing with a floating zone, which is why true scrutiny. I'm not necessarily opposed to floating zones, and I think people that are, are speaking in opposition to it probably should have asked to change our regulations months or years ago. If that's, if we don't want them, we should remove them from the regulations and not you know, bring it up in the middle of somebody's application. So maybe the Regulations Subcommittee should be tasked with looking at that. Now, my my personal opinion is I'm not necessarily opposed um to this in that the language while not limiting to um provides some discretion for the multi-family adaptive reuse um in, in this particular area, it's an existing, somewhat existing use, residential. So I like to, I can see the purpose behind that and the mechanism to get there.
Thank you.
You know, not taking into this zone, zoning issue, this floating zone, redevelopment zone. I think what they're proposing is you know, reasonable, and I think it's an improvement to the area. There is some issue about displacing.
Well, we, 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 again, um, we gotta keep the two separate.
Okay, you're going to be. Okay, alright, so. This, the zoning issue is not something they created, they just wanted to use that in, in this. Is there, there's no other way of them going about getting a change?
There is. They proposed to, to create a new zone. Or they could propose, as they stated, they have reasons to not add this to the L I, to the I two zone, which they stated. Uh, but they could propose a new zone. It could called the Gateway to Clinton Zone, for instance, and have certain uses that are allowed. My worry is that this, this is our, our commercial zone. And it's noted as such, it says specifically, you know, it's right here. Specific action items, the highlighted items, the plan of conservation development. It mentions forwarding housing and everything else, so that's in their generalities. But encourage residential developments, okay, we've got that there, in areas not fronting Route One. This is fronting Route One, and it's our gateway to Route One. It's right near the border. So I, you know, I I think that that, that's an overriding finding that it's inconsistent, kind of conservation, while there are a lot of consistencies. A major inconsistency is highlighted in the plan. And again, that would, that would, the same would apply because these would be on Route One. The, the other landings should, another application come forward, which would again further the inconsistencies with the plan of conservation development.
Uh, Chair, yeah, um, I, I had a zone change at my property, at two thirty-five each day. And it didn't take that long. They, they made um it, it went from a to half-commercial, and I put a tattoo place it. And uh, we changed the zoning. We changed the zoning. And it took, it didn't take long at all. It didn't take long. We, we, we made a a motion to change it at, at one meeting. The next meeting, they voted on it, you know, they had a public hearing, and it was, the room was full. And um, and it passed that quick. So I, I, I would suggest making a zone change like, like Bo said, it won't take long. And everybody likes the idea, I mean, it's just, but what that says is is, is, so, so Scott, this, I said our Bible, you know? So that's my, that's my suggestion, make a zone change, this chairman.
I, I hear what you're, you're saying about the inconsistency, but I, to me, there's more consistencies than inconsistencies with the P O C D. And I think part of the, the selling point to me is that it, it has to do with the adaptive reuse of something that's already there, same or similar use. You know, it'd be one thing if we were taking down a store to put up multi-family residential. So I guess I'm leaning towards more, it's more in line, you know, C D than it is out of one.
Thank you. Um, so anybody else wanting to, go, go ahead. You're on mute right now.
Yeah. Okay, you can hear me. Uh, so I just think that uh in light of everything that we've learned tonight, and uh this is a lot to digest, I think, and I think that this is a really big decision for our town. Um, and I'm just wondering if anybody else on the commission uh, thinks that maybe we, can we table this vote to next meeting so that we have, the commission has time to speak with staff?
That's a fair question to.
I, for one, don't think it's necessary. I think we've, we've heard from staff and the comments that were submitted during the application process. We've heard from the applicants attorney, we've heard the opinions of, you know, the majority of the commission, I
But that's a, it was just a lot of information to think about and mull over, and I think that this is a big decision for our town.
We've had, we've had that information before us for quite some time.
We keep the motion, you can make the motion.
You can make a motion, bro.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to table this decision uh until the next meeting.
We have a second. Okay, I'm sorry.
Nope, it's okay.
Okay, um, is there any more discussion before uh kid? I asked for a motion?
But, uh, uh, after Calberina speaks, if, if I can just.
Mr. Chairman, what, what would be the, um, I agree with Adam, and I, and I agree with Paul, so I but what would be, how long would it take for us to make a zone change? Like, we, you guys, you did it for me, not for me, but I wasn't in the commission then, but what is in a thought, that was so many years ago, back two thousand five or six, we, we made a zone change. Right, we would, what would take, we, can we, we would have to um have a change to the regulations made. So that means, which is what they're proposing, but we would have to do a different one, which would require um
A public hearing.
Uh, well, first, somebody's gotta draft it.
Alright.
Okay, and then we'd have to have the public hearing. Um, and then, and, and what you're talking about could be one of two things, either changing the I two zone
Right.
universally to allow residential within it, which may not be what you want. Or to somehow have within that um that, you know, bulk standards that allow really limited residential in the I two zone. Um, because we wouldn't wanna create a new zone that's just there, or if we did, it would have to be multiple properties. So we'd have to bring in all the uh existing uh property owners and make sure that they agree with it.
They wouldn't necessarily have to, they wouldn't necessarily have to agree with the applicant.
If, if we change the zone.
But, but the, this, for instance, I use this applicant as an example. They could propose the zone change, and then the other existing property owners could address that at the public hearing.
It's more residential than industrial, so I don't, I don't see what the big deal is. To be honest with you. But what I'm saying is, it is not, it, this is a bigger change than what you had proposed. I know, just that particular zone.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it, it would be a little more time than, go ahead, Mike.
I, I agree with Adam said. There's, it's already existing, already, you know, residential, but oh, don't forget, you're creating.
Let, let, like.
Sorry. All they wanna do is really add to it and make it better. And the way they could do it is by the regulation that was passed as a floating zone. Right, so why can't they do what they wanna do, use the floating zone as part of our regulations now?
Thank you, go ahead.
You know, ground rule of zoning, think of the use, not the user. This applicant may be fine. The next one that comes along, you might, you've already zoned, you've already zoned this now, in a way. You've done it in a way that you're saying, we agree with this concept. So the next applicant that comes forward and reuses a a not, not beneficial commercial use, it's still a reuse of property. And you, and that might change the whole concept and that whole act. Or you always have to remember, the cornerstone zoning, the use, not the user. So while you might agree with this proposal, think of what comes down the road. And what can come down the road, and that's why these floating zones are such a bad idea. So zoning should be black and white.
One percent of times, but go ahead.
Zoning should be black and white as much as possible.
Go ahead.
So why do we allow them?
We did that for one.
Yeah.
For one place. They're talking over each other, is that?
As it stands, we have the floating zones, though, and this, the applicant is, that's in our plans, our, our regulations already. They are taking advantage of a something we already consented to, just to be clear. That we can remove the floating zones later on, but it would still, it's currently in regulations.
They're, they're currently mentioned in the regulations. We don't have a floating zone that applies to this type of use in this zone. But we've had this. You've had them in the past, but you're not bound by the mistakes you've made in the past.
Uh, having you in touch.
Just, just a, a sort of um organizational point, as, as you're preparing to look at a potential vote for this application. I think it's important that the commission makes very specific findings relative to the merits of this application and not the structure of the zoning regulations. The structure of the zoning regulations, whether folks would like to amend that in the future or not, is set. Section twenty-one exists, there is a process by which applicants can apply and follow um, and, and provide information, which the applicant team has done. And so I think it's important to say, you know, what are the merits of this particular application? And are they, and have they sufficiently provided evidence to demonstrate to the commission that the findings necessary in section twenty-one have been met? That they have maintained and, and demonstrated consistency with the intent of the zoning regulations? With the relative um land uses in the area with zones that are within the area, is that consistent enough? And does it meet the goals and provisions of the plan of conservation and development? So, so I think it's, it's, it's really important to sort of look at crafting findings and conditions on those terms for the application of before you. Certainly, staff can help support in, in other, you know, sort of topic areas, if you wanna send them to the Regulations Committee or talk about floating zones as theory. We can separately, but in this particular case, I think it's really, really important to say this is a tool that exists. Have they demonstrated in their application sufficient information for the commission to support or deny this particular creation of a floating zone? And then you can talk about the landing piece of it. Um, so I just wanna make sure that those two issues are sort of separated a little bit.
Now, I would like to revisit something that didn't get a second a little bit ago. Um, and that is delaying our vote on this until we can work with the uh with our staff to craft uh, appropriate language for the motion. And I would like to, uh, personally, I think we should ask staff to come up with um potential language for us for either opposing or approving, so that we can then discuss that at our next meeting and have a clear, um, clear language, make sure that whatever we're voting on is clear. Uh, and I have a motion to do that.
Yes, I'll put that to a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Go ahead, second.
I second that.
Thank you very much. Okay, um. So with that, uh, any further discussion?
No, I think we're on the right path.
Okay, all those in favor of uh?
Aye.
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 Okay, opposed? Abstaining, motion carries. Uh, brings us to item B, which we had said would be tabled and called a decision was made on A. So it is tabled until next meeting.
And it's just a point of order, the, the public hearing was continued until after decision is rendered.
Correct, the public hearing is still can open. Okay, you okay? And you understand what we just did?
If I may just ask, point of order, just to confirm, so the application to rezone, the public hearing is still open? Well, which means the commission will be accepting potentially additional public comment, additional testimony from the applicants.
Correct.
Specific to P Z C twenty-three nineteen.
Make sure you understood, yes, I do. Okay, um, with that, we moved to item seven, administrative review. I didn't have anything on that. Um, correspondence. Uh, we have a petition um about the road change. And this was received in, on the seventh?
Correct, it was, it was information relative to the, the road, it was forwarded to uh the Chief of Police and the Director of Public Works. Uh, also to share with the Traffic Commission so that, that has been forwarded.
Yeah, and this is, just, just for verification, this isn't something we have any authority over anyway. So it's more informational for us. Okay, the, the other people they sent it to is more appropriate for them. Okay, so this was informational. Okay, with that, uh, item nine is adjournment.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I second.
Second over there, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at eight.
It's, it's two AM over here.
Where are you?
I'm in London, yeah.
Thank you, everybody.